I hope that you can be able to hear me, take a flight to the Capitol. I have spoken before in Washington and up there at the Capitol, the public hearing. But today, I want to first recognize that the board is a difficult place for the budget, and obviously, year to year, because of many factors that occurred over the last few years. And again, this year with our budget, we created the need to still work towards our final means to balance the budget over the last few years, other than closing schools. However, after many years, I'm on my way to the end of the day. And this year, the issue is to be addressed and dealt with through the best and critical addresses of the budget.
You may leave. Thank you. I believe it is important to share now, too, that the growth of other budget reductions, the possibility that school supervisors will allow us to carry over funds for operating budgets, and to work with budget committees and work with supervisors, that in our school course desire to continue to have a school presence and to grow, that this allows us to make a decision to keep the elementary school open and to grow. I already go through your question, beginning to be held, since consolidating the middle school continues to be a possibility. I know we have been indicating that the budget problems of the school system base are improved, but they are somewhat improved, but they're not finished. We still have a deficit left at this point. One of the factors that's created by budget difficulties, first, over the last few years, our enrollment has significantly declined, and has in many years. It's not a problem of the unique Smith County, and a problem of several school budgets that our region has had. Second, due to the economic recession recovered, enrollment loss, and competing state budget priorities, we're seeing a drop in our state revenue. In 2008, I've budgeted $36,500,000 in the state, and this year, our budget reflects state revenue of $380,000,000. That's a big difference. The locality does pick up a difference in the type of funding as well as others. We also didn't mostly depend on state funding for our president. What have we done in the past? We've not provided decent grades to school employees, to set staff and schools, to block to change full-time or part-time positions to reduce maintenance, and transportation, and much more. This year's budget reflects the following: another year of forgotten enrollment. DRS, DRS is the Digital Retirement System and its related programs. A $720,000 increase in health insurance increase in order to maintain local support of $250,000 an hour. Due to enrollment loss, factors, we have less state funding than previous years due to that. We are appreciative that the budget committee and the school supervisors are working with this one possibility of new comparable spending. But this year, we also, with the state loss funding and sports supervisor level funding that has been made, we have all federal funds, typically federal funds also have a more finding decrease in expenditure because they're funded all of that specific purpose. And in Virginia, as one of the level states, school boards cannot carry revenue, except for some small fees. We can ask for grant reimbursement, and sometimes apply for a certain grant. It's important to note, we still have a budget deficit for next year, but it's much better than it was during four weeks ago, due to several factors. Therefore, this time, we're only considering funding middle school for future growth, and we'll be leaving the elementary school open. A decision that I made this evening concerning the topic of public hearing, in response to questions asked and made recently about budget, we have three meetings that are represented, one made as well, a second meeting in May that will be determined on day twelve, and then a June ninth meeting. Based on, again, feedback, one of the main actions most likely, so the decision is made because the middle school can work out time for kids to visit very middle school before them in the school year, and help with that transition to make it as easy as possible. The rules are before, there's a copy at the statement where the budget signing is. The Smith County School Board welcomes the budget for all of this meeting and asks citizens to involve guidelines, presume to deny, and address the board. Public hearing is our opportunity for the board to listen to the thoughts of the community as they plan making decisions. It's not a question and answer format. You're welcome to present questions and leave contact information. Questions will be reviewed and answered if they're possible to be answered. If you plan to address the board during a period of time designated for a comment, please sign in at the designated table, because I think you already made that announcement. And as the board chairperson, we're called for each individual to sign down to the table. When you approach the vote, if you personally identify yourself, each presentation is limited to three minutes. Speakers who decide to use this conference are allotted minutes, may not yield a ballot of approval. However, the chairperson in question makes this decision at the time of the number of votes. If it gets going longer, the board chairperson has, as far as the board members give you a cue, so that we don't get upset with you, so that we can actually get your attention at the time of. We do ask that everybody refrain from any kind of disruptive behavior, and our opinion is that these are the rules of conduct in the meeting, we want to listen to the speakers, and we appreciate that you're willing to do it.
This time, we'll go ahead and honor the topics being presented. Say it. First speaker is Richard Clay.
I will speak as loud as possible. My name is Richard Clay. I'm here tonight as the Smith County Superintendent of the Rive Valley District. I would like to thank the district for having the time, plenty of people to listen to the courses, and to tell us about the families, and to give us a better experience. Let me start by saying, I know the school board is in a tough spot. I work for the school session, I'm very familiar with it. I also work for the county, and I'm very close to Spotify. I'm currently on the letter committed for the county school board, for the Smith County supervisors. I'm associated with the county government. We both understand that funding from this space is critical to the success of the county government. This county has a repast, and will continue in the future to make education for our people more powerful. The question for us tonight is how best to handle the money that has been entrusted to the school. We find ourselves in a crucial culture, and it's important to realize that the outcome of our decisions will have a tremendous impact on our school system, our students, and our county for years to come. Tonight, we will hear your questions concerning the funding, students, student numbers, schools involvement, class sizes, testing, and transportation, etc. These are all valid concerns that need to be addressed. I've had numerous talks, and meetings with the community, community members, and local school representatives. I know everyone is concerned about about the 180 students that attend this school in the Rive Valley school. We've been told that the elementary school has been removed from the state, and now it's all going to be made in the ass. I know it was still a difficult school, and all those other options could not be taken. I would ask that you consider all possibilities before deciding to add to the whole text. I know it's a great concern, but we're not going to let the middle school be compromised for a greater reconfiguration, reducing future closure of the building. Please understand the nature of this school. This building is the heart and soul of this community. This is a family school, and a beacon of all good in the county. Every week, students, community members, and other organizations manage use of this building. I'm sure the road, the nine school group, on their website, describes this school as a longtime family residence, for the community since 1936, and that's just what this area is. When you hear the passionate concerns and the voices of residents here, you understand we are not talking about a greater order, level funding, increased funding, or anything. We're talking about family. I also would like to say this is not a just say a sugar road issue. This is a Ridge Valley Elementary, Saltwood Elementary issue. This is a Horfordville, Horford High School issue. A Horford High School, Chilhawley High School issue. An Marion Elementary, Marion Elementary issue. A Marion Elementary, Oak Point, Chilhawley Elementary issue. I would encourage every member to look closely at your entire budget, put everything on the table, and consider your priorities. I would encourage each and every member to think long and hard before choosing the path that the school board would like to follow. The decision forward late in the near future will have an adverse effect on the community and other communities throughout this county. I would put my trust in you to do what is right for the children on the side of the mountain, and to do what is right for the communities, and to do what is right for this county. Thank you.
Our next one is Giger Corbett.
Good evening, those of you that don't know me, my name is Giger Corbett. I am a member of the Sugar Grove Community Council, and I am also the president of the Sugar Grove Youth League. Our children in sports are some of the things I'm going to be addressing in our talk. It's a known fact that every year in Marion, Chilhawley, that there are more children wanting to play in sports than there are across the whole roster, and it makes it necessary for our children to face being cut from the team. At Sugar Grove Middle, combined with Marion Middle, the number of students that will not be able to play will increase tremendously. Playing sports and being a part of the teams do very good qualities in our students, that they can use later in life, such as sportsmanship, the fair play, the work ethic. The many students who live for the outreach of the county will find it very difficult to participate due to the amount of travel involved, too, and other practices. In our community, we have some parents who only get to attend the children's home games, and if our children are moved across the mountain, some of those parents will never get a chance to watch our children play at school, unfortunately. Our red league here in Sugar Grove serves roughly 100 children in basketball, we could do basketball every year. We serve approximately that American Indian in T-ball and baseball. We ask almost no money for those children to be involved in those sports. A lot of those kids, the only reason they get to play those sports is because they are here in Sugar Grove, and they cost none. And if they had to move across the mountain and use American red league, that's one of the opportunities lost in the American Indian, where we'll have a tremendous amount of students and children who will not get the opportunity to be involved in a sport of any kind, just because of the distance to travel back and forth to the school. I've come up out of camp, played sports, and I can, I can tell you the time that it takes to get home off of school bus, turn around, and drive back to Marion, play my activity, drive home again, take my shower, eat my supper, try to get homework done, and try to get into the decent act. It is a very, very hard thing to do, and it just limits so many of our children with what their families do, and parents do. There again, sometimes mom and dad, none of it's all over again, but mom and dad taking orders, driving, they're very awful, so keeping Sugar Grove here was sad, and it enables a lot of the parents to have a close encounter, where your children can come and be involved in sports at some time. I would go ask that the board consider, if any part of our school closes here in Sugar Grove, would the school board consider consolidating the central office? Since all options are supposedly on the table, closing the central office and relocating the issue through will make perfect sense. If our school closes, we can have plenty of room to house central office staff, and by doing this, citizens of Rive Valley will still have school presence in their community. If it's fair to ask our children to relocate, it is certainly fair to ask the central office employees to relocate. With that being said, I believe that every school board representative and all administrative officials are good people without standing credentials. They are all deeply concerned about every school and hear deeply about the success of every child in our county. In addition, they stand firmly on their principles and good moral character. That's why I'm sure that they can vote in favor of keeping on a pretty 283% of potential. After all, that is what all the citizens of Sugar Grove really want, is to have our school here and intact. And I would like to leave you with a quote that goes, "Let history not judge me for what I did for my school and community, but let history judge me on what I still have to do for my school and community." I hope that I never see the day where the world will run, or have to take a vaccine to the online death. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Drew Fong. I'm the proud president of the mine school seventh district, and the volunteer official of the revenue for the basketball for our local government. I'd like to speak to the board for validation of the middle school portion of our school. While some parents are out of reach and children are not studied, but if there is a victory that begins to be part of our school, I can take that victory with a smile on my face and most importantly, a short vehicle. One of the reasons that our school is often worked with a shock in the law is because the cost for students to educate kids here is the highest in the county. Taking the middle school to offer drive that cost higher for the remaining children. Next time the school board faces a budget shortfall, which will turn into a wrong condition in our county, increase the treatment, and fight for legal for the next two years, I suggest that neither this elementary school will be the top target on the budget cut phase at that time. We and the residents of Sugar Grove would be forced to say that none of these meetings are going to help our school. It would be for the board to say that education, that education in Sugar Grove has a long positive effect. To close the middle school and save this city $200,000 for the proposed budget investment posted on the school board's website. Small amounts of charges to be saved are taken in our middle school, which surely will tell the savings if we say that mission. To close our middle school is merely a management, to temporarily stop school, which means moving down the school system. The school board has a few to call it for other options that will save us as a vulnerable model on shutting down our school. Other options such as consolidate Chilhawley, and include the middle and high schools, hard sleep, and the management system is going to be short on the state legislation side of options. This option will get a lot of current solutions with more money for the school. However, I guess it's easier to solution to come over here for this meeting and replace the possible political barriers and cash on such a conscious option. Living at the safety asset of this proposed change, I thought putting 60 more deals in Marion Middle School could only add to the risk of problems already occurred there. We've offered a grand middle school for $20,000 for another 10 school years, reported for 500,000 in total. During this period, Marion Middle School reported 61 offenses against other students, 43 offenses against others, and 100 statements literally for disruptive behavior, which attracts a 32% percentage. Sugar Grove mine schools, this time period, reported a total of 1,888, 13 offenses against other persons, to the percentage of sale of their students. I want my daughter to pursue the best education possible, and I'm sure all parents do. Taking the time to deal with your behavior issues in the classroom is time my child and my family took. In closing, I would like to stick around myself and a lifelong resident in Sugar Grove community. I completed the eighth grade here at our school, and I'd like my daughter and all the other children to have that same opportunity. I thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Kim Slim, and I'm a lifelong member of Sugar Grove community, and very thankful that I have been able to grow up here and go to this school here. My cousin also went to school here, and I'm very thankful that I'm here, and very grateful that they can go with us well. Sugar Grove school and Sugar Grove community has been, served us well, and a wonderful growing opportunity for us. Our smaller school, with our lower class numbers, we're very academy stages, and we don't want to do that. My topic of emphasis is class size matters. Quality of our children's education must be our fundamental. In my preparation to determine, to consider the effects of class size on outcomes, I did a research of literature, and I discovered four main findings that I would like to share tonight. One is that small classroom size in the lower grades is very important to the academic and overall success of the student. This was proven in large studies that were proven to be valid studies. Good or bad habits and socialization is more than a mere term change, and it cannot be undone in the later years. The second point is a researcher on, another researcher on small classroom size in his respective STAR study, found that the economic benefits of the programs of small classrooms of funding them outweighed the cost. So please note that, that study and that finding, there was actually a positive return on those, funding those smaller classrooms, a 6% return on their investment in those smaller class sizes. Another valid study, my third point, was from the Washington State Institute of Public Policy, and it found the size of the academic benefits, there were additional benefits of increase to lifetime market earnings, reduction in probability of future criminalities, and lower public health care costs, of those that were in the smaller grades, in small class sizes in their lower grades. A very significant find. The fourth point that I found of significant interest was that the smaller class size proved by research that teachers do their job better, which promotes stronger job satisfaction and lower teacher turnover. When we have lower teacher turnover, we have a stat with various teachers who have developed strong teaching skills. Unfortunately, in our own minds, we know that these facts are true, and we probably didn't have to have research to tell us those, but it is nice to have that research that does support the small class size, and our need to, I continue to make that a priority. In our own Sugar Grove students, we have also proven this, this research to be true. I have, I will mention a few of those who come to my mind. Here are many to name, of you that I have dotted down, our former US Congressman, Pat Mannix. Dr. John Huron, Professor of veterinary science at Virginia Tech. A little, my own daughter, Shelley Slim, who was able to attend an ICB college successfully. Other Sugar Grove students that continued their higher education at rheumatologist, Adlon Baker, New Haven Medical School of Medicine, Chrissy Wong, Almer, A. Rivera, UVA, Ed Vincy, Massurgit, Virginia Tech, Jennifer Parsons, Northwestern, Amanda Slim at Wake Forest University, Billy Joe Warner is continuing her education in ICU North. These students are teaching us and are taking care of us. Several other students that have gone on to battle the trade, including Victoria's at Marion Senior Class School, Billy Johnson, Brendan Meddon Stewart, serious point Blankenship. Some of our students have been able to obtain athletic scholarships to fund their higher education. Shawnee Cornet, an All-American and owner of multiple national track titles. Jen Burner and Duell, Ethan Ridderson, Marshall Hall. These are just a few of the students who have come from Sugar Grove school. In conclusion, Dr. Robinson, Smith County School Board, Board of Supervisors, and Sugar Grove community, we must consider other initiatives for balancing the budget, rather than sacrificing our Sugar Grove school, a model of academic success as proven by significant bodies of research and by our own student record. Thank you.
Schools, go.
Good evening, Chair of the show, Dr. Robinson, members of the Smith County School Board, my name is Melissa Dalton. I have written a speech and took into consideration that my closer early military school levels are difficult, so I'm going to read my speech in its entirety, just to share my thoughts with you. It sounds deeply profound for the children and teachers of the Rive Valley district that I speak to you to one. On behalf of the children, their families, and their teachers, why are we having the only public hearing in this Smith County school area? The Rive Valley district covers one-third of Dan Mountain Smith County. Aren't we deserving of a school in our district? After all, should our tax dollars benefit a school for our community children? No school for our community would devastate our district, impose serious economic concerns that would affect our entire county. Have US of the board looked at every possible option of saving money while continuing to educate the children in the very best possible means available in our own community? So I ask you again, why is this the only school with a public hearing schedule? While I hold other public hearings, that's a result. Here's another question that I have, that I feel you have addressed when you talk about our elementary school, but it concerns our mental health as well. How early should our children be expected to get on the bus? Bus number 43 already picks up the children from Pham at 6:42 a.m., and has picked up as early at 6:15 in the past, depending on those who attend and react to this. This bus will have to get in line at earlier times, and they can then ride home after 5:30 p.m. That alone would have cost almost $12 hours in a day, which is more than some adults to work overtime. How conducive is that to student learning for small children and older children? To be picked up before daylight and return home at almost dark in the winter? I believe they get on the bus early enough next. Have you looked into the distances between the other elementary schools compared to the bus issues of our Rive Valley district students? It is only six miles between Oak Point Elementary and Chilhawley Elementary. It is five miles between Marion Elementary and Acton Elementary. It is 14.5 miles between Oak Point Elementary and Sugar Grove Elementary Schools, and 12 miles between Marion Elementary and Sugar Grove Elementary. Schools, and twelve miles between Marion Elementary and Sugar Grove. What about the distance between Rebelle Elementary and Northwood Elementary? Have you looked at that option? Would it have as much impact on that district as it would have to Ravelry District? I am positive that you and our school are troubled and scared. Your non-teenagers would be also, because they could absolutely lose their jobs. They stand to risk this because Sugar Grove's teenagers take theirs. In some counties, all non-teenagers in our people are especially cautious, just in case the budget, the budget is not approved, and they have to make personal cuts to make it work. What happens if this happens in neighboring counties? Again, there are other ways to save the budget. I believe the teachers in your county could better take two days without paying than for any one person to face lifting their job or to see a school completely closed. Again, why is this the only school with a public hearing? Are you both seeing you receive money from best place for the benefit of the students of their individual community needs as well as seeing to their most valued faithful to parents? Smith County does not have the industry that I think to draw from, but the real estate tax is much higher than any surrounding county. Closing Sugar Grove and Bottom Schools will have a devastating impact on the community and our community, the fact that it will absolutely destroy our community. Our tax dollars within your largest Danmouth, the Ravelry District, should hold well included for a school in our community. Families participate in children's education when it is close to their home, and this is clearly evident when you sit standing where you're going as usual to a Sugar Grove school, or you wait in line to talk with your child teacher. When families in trouble anyway have to travel a larger distance to participate, it is the children who live that. There are many children from this district who will not have any advantage to this awesome school with its excellent teaching staff if it is split up and dispersed to have many and three other elementary schools. It can happen just that way. A rising corporate that is in a class of another school not knowing another child in that classroom, and they've given a class size of fourteen. Just remember that yourself, that that means yourself in that situation, or whatever child. Just put yourself in that situation for the first time ever. If Northwood High School has more part-time teachers than full-time teachers, why are you not needing some consolidation to help? Wouldn't that save even more money? As a parent and as an educator myself, I am not an advocate for any form of consolidation, especially if it takes everything one district has and it only means a function of the community. But I am seriously encouraged to look into other options. In a time of economic distress, teachers do not conceive of a way, and this is happening all around us everywhere. What has happened to Boka and Smith County if they cannot afford to operate its schools? Please look outside the box and find another way to solve this problem, and allow this district to keep its glory. I want you to find a way for the middle schools and the elementary schools to remain here in this community. Please know that this school virtually has no discipline problems as compared to the other options. It is a proven research fact that when children who have never been disciplined are forced into uncomfortable situations where problems occur frequently, they often know problems themselves and face the situations they are already facing. Mr. Shaw, I cannot thank you enough for fighting for the children of the Ravelry District, and for your continued service over twenty years as a school board, who are very respected community persons and admired by others in my community. I have taken school trips to Sugar Grove where I know you and your wife and Aaron have sponsored children. I commend you for your years of service and for your continued fight for what you as well as each of us here in Ravelry believe in for the continued growth of our children. It's very important that at the end of the school year, if not by the end of this day, we as parents, community members, and teachers hear that this school in its entirety will remain and pass for decades. Each of you knows this is what it's worth. I leave you asking that you make sure in person you see the faces of each and every child and teacher who loves and serves this community out of God's great love, and who lead our school in tax and this community in the Ravelry District. I'll leave you with a quote from Tom Brokaw. "Here is the place of America to take a stand. It is public education. It is the understanding of our cultural and political systems. It is the great common ground. Public education, after all, is the engine that moves us out of society to our common ground. It is in public education that the American means education." And I would like to say that this progression is the great common ground that is in our community. It is the only engine we have other than our churches. I thank you.
First of all, I'd say it's awesome that there's a big turnaround for the Sugar Grove community. And, uh, anyway, playing the guitar, Scott, and President Sugar Grove, the Lord of the Light. Sugar Grove, we know for years and coming, something that many people believe in my family, and issues that are very common in our town. You know, I have other feeling that there are rules to all these things that may be closed, but I'm just saying, there would be some fundamental part of the community that possibly happened. There would be no reason to show this town, because we've always had, my opinion, amazing groups of children, of great small classrooms for us or a district for us, the best teachers who wanted to stay in peace for many years and not leave. It's just a fantastic overall learning environment. Today, I feel words could possibly happen to Sugar Grove's school. You know, part of our school is actually being proposed to be shut down. This is not acceptable. It's not acceptable to this age, any part of our school to shut down. You know, there's been a few reasons on this business. One reason I'm not saying this group works because it has the knowledge and technical capacity to let me all, all of our students at Sugar Grove School and have in the community. I'm not only a proud Sugar Grove supporter, I'm proud here, I'm proud of the center school, but also from visiting our town with open arms here in forty-three years now, and we're not the only visitors to this community. There are many other families intent on assistance of our community, traveling to live right here in Sugar Grove. Closing the school can only have a negative impact on all of us. What reason, and what a family considered leaving here who do not have the greatest quality of school and all for that, sure it's a beautiful town, but it's a long way to get down to another town to stay and collect materials. If the school does close, I can hear two moving, families moving out of Sugar Grove. Less equal certainly means less profit for these businesses, and also property values that quickly go down if we do move our school. According to an article about how much the total neighborhood worth, published in the Journal of Economics, property values did decrease on average ten percent in communities that closed schools. It's not only to lose the worth of business, Eric, but also to hurt everyone who knows profit. I truly believe it would have more of an economic impact closing the school in our community than in any town in Smith County. I believe we're gorgeous city town with going to downtown center office for most closing classes. Sugar Grove is also, as has been said, is a gorgeous residential facility. It's a huge state-owned water community, and we have agricultural building that's mini key to you, and we have wonderful ball festivals that the people from every community attend. We have recreational programs, basketball, baseball, for kids participating in it. And we have a playground, a track, and this goes on and on. If the school closes, think what would happen to all of us? Who would, who would take over this? A good school provides the ability for us to own town. Why would you want to take this ability away from us? Honestly, it scares me to think we're trying to look like they're teaching a closed school. You know what I'm talking about, Richard, I got, is you know, I'm figuring that the victims of the nature, there's different people say they're better off, they have more opportunity to attend Mary Middleway. I strongly disagree. The only extra classes for them to take are those schools are extraordinary classes. The same four classes are offered right here in Sugar Grove. And also class size is a part of our school, but isn't that what we all want? I think, I think we all agree we want our children to receive the best possible education. I just don't see how sending our kids to another school is providing a quality education. Our older kid, group of kids who be attending this school that we've talked and already stated, has involved average disciplinary problems. Why should we send them? I truly believe that all our sons and daughters, Mrs. Corum, also talks about, the cost of operating elementary classes will be high. So even if the only good school is leaving this year, it's going to happen a couple years from now, or at the same time, if we're going to get in. Would we be here for people of the community battling this problem once again? I fear we will be. Your representatives from all districts should really consider everything that's been said here tonight. How would we feel if a mature school being closed towards us? I've forgotten that you would do whatever it took, and you would do whatever it took to stop it, and stop it in this track. The question I would like to pose to school members is the same one that's all been raised. If all of us, if we had more opportunities, how would we be? How would we discuss whether we're a school? And frankly, I don't want to see any school closing in our town. I think that would be a problem. There's two parts to small communities. There has to be other options. I understand that we have a budget, I understand the cost will rise, and there's a lot of figures to go into, looking at the time and the price of this. But I truly believe we should not be so easy on the money. If this should make some happen, we have the best quality education for all of our students in all parts of our county. Closing Sugar Grove and our school, or any other school, will not accomplish anything. Thank you for your time.
My name is Peter Or, and I'm a thirteen-year citizen of Sugar Grove, and I have two children who currently attend Sugar Grove School. I would look for one tonight as long as we have any need for our students here in our community, but that hard working tax pay and circumstances we have in our county to a school like in our community. In seventeen eighty-seven, Benjamin Franklin was asked for a time to go and be back again for our reputation, and then replied, well, if there's a public, we can eat. So many times politicians just say and tell us that we live in the waters and here's democracy over the others. We do not live in a democracy, we live in a history of others. A public is one that we have represented, a democracy is one for the masses. We at Sugar Grove, not Bill Marry, still have the tall four actions of one of their beliefs, who to hide, to fight, or walk the walk. We have voted in representatives to voice our views, voice the needs of our community. And so, I would give that time to that, so we thank you. Sugar Grove's citizens, employees, and the school are willing to make sacrifices to keep our school open. We asked at two thousand and twelve, we need to close our school. Yet we didn't do fundraisers and fees to help the public shortfall across the whole county that not makes sense at all. I now ask the school board, Board of fifty-five, and President Representative, to make equal and neither judge at all schools to close the debt and budget. Please do not make our school be sacrificial lamb in the shortfall. We, the people of Sugar Grove, are saying the law, we're saying we want our school remaining. We're asking for years of help in ways that our school can, as it is, no bunch of classes, no arts and arts, but free teaching available. This school's ability to not consume our chunks of budget in its utility, I believe we can make, implement ways to all of our schools to look like we're guilty of all. But the largest cost of any budget is manpower, that is the teachers and staff. The only way to really to reduce our budget by closing this school is reduce the staff. We've been told that we were trying to relocate the teachers and the staff into other schools. Gentlemen, ladies, when you take the larger portion of your budget, you should just enter and shut the foot of the school, you have not directed any budget for that. We have... We have to close the school and relieve its staff and employees. We asked you to prove, we designed that you could stand up and fairly tell us that our school can answer. I believe our teachers, I believe our staff have that need, um, but they can stick on those who just play. I think we should pull up, down in class, and I know that any budget shortfall is in any moment, and we have to start making our tough efforts. If we start looking, we start talking less about education, we're looking at cutting our schools. If I were to show how it is all for the parents, they want to cut the football program because we didn't afford other people's football families and baseball teams. There would be a four block divide. They move the floor, we move the school. I think there's other ways that we as a county, that these youth representatives who look safe, Sugar Grove is important. Sugar Grove has a need for a school, Sugar Grove has a need, has a right to be a school. So gentlemen, we as people, here gather today to say that we have a choice, and that we will be heard, and we thank you for your...
Round ball! And we said that if we want to manage the key in this part of the school was the problem, prior to the governor's office, county schools, and, and he started. Two thousand and eight, MTP man, decided to set a long term on Thursday, and heard two or three instant actions right now. In the first, first rule is a rule, pause the vote. However, several other actions, Ross, who concluded that other schools, self-service consolidation, restructuring, military status, possibility, possibility of development included, including Meredith, all of them noted in the district plan, has developed a path taken on this side of the council. And some of these are right now, and today, a load of these obligations have passed through, saved several lives by the folks at this school there, have been seriously improved in six years' time. I thank you for the very degree, due to complications, and can't comply, that's often will have to bring a risk, so forth. At that time, we usually force the study, we sit in the next few years together, and we're going to have to go to Sugar Grove School. Let's look one reason for you. As present, this is our elementary, as third county's plan, our city's district, from fifth county line, on the back. This is the only county building in the new power system. Closing this school means we have no services at all in this part of the county, except the school. I want to say, with the young family that have moved in, screwed down, and that's turned out of bounds, and the kids trust the land and the marriage, we can play forever, how long it's going to take, all this money back and forth, that we know, school without, make a lot of falling, we lay a lot of losses. I've worked no time, I've not worked maybe ten hours, but this kid is going to run up and play an hour, almost no way to get that back. Is that the difference in education? I doubt. First of all, that's in this community. Tax places go down, uh, village store may go and fit, uh, population get older, no family will move out, no receipt. Tax, tax, um, taxway soon, if you have to raise or drop the land use tax and get it from landowners, just consider bringing. Another, and this is a big, almost immediate effect, I remember the Rock Valley article and a near forty about more than six. This school is our largest customer. That closes, and we're ramping right now. This school closes, a few families look out for it, and kids, huge water. It impacts everybody who's doing that work. Right now, the nation is at great even more. And that's going down. City market sales says that since we are forty-four thousand five hundred fourteen thousand, they have to fix the tab in here. They don't want to talk about that kind of thing. We've put up a cap, the process will murder the school for that. We know, county politics, like the big wrong issues, they teach no way of having, uh, has this over considered, um, how this school may have been, has been a big, big problem if our kids is married. We're talking now, all in the middle school, basically, we're living in a toxic, toxic school. Nobody in here does a bigger than that, don't they? So, at that point, how before we should do without going back to previous issues and say, hey, we just said something to us about the whole point, if you have a very elementary school, that would, that would go back to doing it in the first, of no, none of those three schools could handle all of our kids. That is, that's an issue that you guys have, the greats. I would want to be a teacher, over here. They still, for that matter. Thank you still out, the community, attention, hold him, and play. As others have said, while everybody, you, uh, screw with this, it's a place of humor. You don't have any place to have art gatherings, you don't have another place to play a very cool game, so. Baseball field down there, D C Hill, the, 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 playing them quick, they have never a track. What happens if that's closed, though? Another, speaking to you, you want to be that student, sad. We need to be that several people listening, we go. Bus station, we know that the bus routes, if you win that, that comes, will take a lot longer. Okay. Part of our school, kids here, a large part of this school, have tracks for this first school. When we put kids on the bus, they can cross the marines, they're not going to come up to the cafeteria, the track is going to hang in there, and they're getting their job, that's the time that schools are there. So, what happens if hundreds of times, is, is he located very less than twenty-five minutes? Without, I don't know, I don't know any of you, but just, how many dollars would save the money to the rest? As Biffy said, it's almost different in one place to another, Stewart, I just fought If you're, if you're not saving money, and you're just living in a dark, dark place, you're not a student, you're not going to save anything, but you're going to give it Okay, I'll, I'll be the closest that will take a risk, but a few issues, and there's more problems. Uh, I would tend to still, I'd be, get out of this state, because I'm nervous about Let's look at what we have now, at Sugar Grove. We have better features, no disputes, problem here for best. Yes, and I know two first up in here, we have a lot of issues and problems, and we want to turn it, but no middle school areas, our residents, in your space. We have a top student, the register, they still here, problem best two counties. We're able to follow global programs, recreation, out of this field, down the block. We now have election polls across the way in the, in the country. We have lots of, as sure as we can get, and such as a world, we don't have one that there is. Ready to give the kids breakfast, like there for the young students, you want to stay with them. Now, what school or games are closing, opens up there. Everybody thinks, move to another school, they don't want work, or look at this place, no teachers, or what have. Possible member of the middle school, because of the increased transportation costs. All middle schools, Mary Middle School, all, all middle school students at Mary Middle School, the higher school, they can break through, more discipline is in, like I say, we already know that fact. They'll have fewer children, things, nothing in town, but fewer opportunities, we're going to achieve, like, best ten. Uh, they'll have to consolidate on the road routes, but they'll have more bus, most, here some of those, higher fuel costs, possibly more buses required, they can't let home road buses. We have one that's built in complex, but he can manage that, and that's problems we can save into the home state, because you have to close entire schools and get that. You don't get any of that, of the middle school. Which also loses county presence in the third county. Going back to the whole view, proper bank is going down, vaccine series are affected, less community presenting, and especially in this part of the county, we really don't have that. And what community will do for this? And it starts at middle school, that goes on that, I don't know, it's a problem like this, like, right here. No county servers, our taxes are a part of our community. Look around, get old road tools, that has been in here, and you can make that dollar from young hearts. No access to bike, all programs, bike hall programs, secure room, we start over here. I've been here for twenty-five, about thirty-five. No level to land, that's the deal down here, walk around, play around. Even though the community is fifty, I've got bills. No S and S, that's a holy place. No waiting place for large group gatherings. No access to the egg shop over here at local farm. This is kind of what I never noticed, completely forgotten. What we're going to have to do is give up the rest of what the plans give, while so we're not having that, which specifically has, that can say, you go to school, and almost suppose matching that's a lot of good, isn't that true? House savings, trust, true, that's sometimes, depending on, if it's less, not a problem that's real, on this side of town. Give a minute, give, give the rest, and turn it, close the city all the time, on the shit that's good. I think most people here tonight, fully aware, we live in a toxic, but, but that's not, almost not value. So, yes, now, this area, not been that before, I've heard the same thing today, and we really not heard any serious consolidation or major destruction from the county system, set to look at what we're going to do to Sugar Grove. No government, as mentioned, protect, save, like, the fish barrel in our community, those private, we see there's two hundred thousand dollar papers and a million dollar paper, which we know, not crossing, already told us, they're that true, less. But it's, it's not mentioned on our, on the website, except credit for seven years. How many can say next year, who knows? Some rare weather problems, and prior focus on robber explosions, very forcing the closure of our school to make our students face the butcher's face of, going here every time of the community's progress. Being, we thank the university school, when they closed the school here, there was a house building, not ten sixty, we want to build this hour camp. They had school board meeting, driven day, and you threw rocks in a little room, and allegedly, we didn't have to take it for a while. And the board just said, boy, you're a terrible, I'm a school owner. So, listen, while in contrast, and we start appreciation, that's one of the things, you can, thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is David Martin, I'm with the city board. I'm used to building, and solid, very, 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 many, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, for this, this. When I was in the building, I didn't have a key set, I don't have a power plant at all, and also one of the students, my life. And the science manager, David, he involved in making critical, close down, and at the same time, the physics in the space, and so this degree, as far as I'm working on, my best friend, failed to last, but I can teach his math. I'm the thing, who you're coming from with this math, and how that, I know where you're